I'd like to make a motion to recess until 6:30 PM. Mr. Shirok is delayed due to work scheduling conflict. And we'd like him to be able to participate. He is going to be en route. So could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Jama. Can you call the roll?
Yes, Sparland.
Yes.
Mr. Greger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Vance.
Yes.
The motion passes four to zero. Okay, we are now in recess until 6:30 PM.
Very good.
Thank you. Did that work? That did.
And then.
Okay, we're back from recess. It's now 6:30 and Mr. Shrock is here. And we're moving on to 1.4 Mission and Viking Values. Mission Statement: Empowering All Students to Reach Their fullest Potential. Values are trust, leadership, communication, collaboration, accountability, integrity, respect. And we do adhere to the See Something, Say Something campaign. Now we're on 2.1 Election of Presidents. Declare that nominations are open for the President of the Northridge Local Schools Board of Education for 2025. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to make the nomination of Evelyn Vance as Board President.
Do we have any other nominations? Do we do it that way?
Mm-hmm.
We ask it front? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Anybody else? No? Okay, is there? Is there a second for that? Do we need a second?
Yes. Need a second.
Oh, Jeff.
Not necessary, though.
It's not, but we can do it. Yeah, let's make sure. So we're making sure. And so I guess. Okay. Motion made by Jema. Mrs. Bamerlin. Seconded by Mr. Shrock. That the nominations for President be closed and Evelyn Vance be elected as President of the Northridge Local Board of Education for 2025. Roll call.
Mrs. Bamerlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Shrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes. And I guess.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Lewis? Thank you, everybody. I think.[1152.94][1152.97](laughing) Thank you. We're all in this together, so.
Stand, please. Read this and repeat after me, and I'll go slowly. Raise your right hand. I, Evelyn Vance.
I, Evelyn Vance.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As President of the Board of Education.
As President of the Board of Education.
In and for.
In and for.
The said Northridge Local School District.
The said Northridge Local School District.
Licking.
Licking.
Knox.
Knox.
Delaware County.
And Delaware Counties. Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In accordance with the laws.
In accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
Hereafter.
And hereafter.
To be enacted.
Enacted.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
Set office.
And set office.
Till my, until my successor.
Until my successor.
Is chosen and qualified.
Is chosen and qualified.
Officially sworn in. If you would sign here, please.
Okay.
Yes. No musical chair? Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh. Yep.
(inaudible). Oh, sorry.
Let's see where we're at here. Vice President. Are we all ready? I'm in shock that we're all ready. Okay, so we're on 2.3. The election of Vice President. Declare that nominations are open for Vice President of the Northridge Local Schools Board of Education for 2025. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kate Krieger.
Do I have any others?
Yes, he's been, he's our longest-serving board member. Been at this longer than you probably care to admit. I'd nominate Jeff Shrock. Could be, could be his last time on it. You never know.
Anything else? No? Do we have a second for Kate? Mrs. Krieger?
I think. Turn really.
Or how does that go? Wendy?
Yes, now you're done. There's two nominations.
Oh, there's two nominations. Hang on. Bear with me a minute. So.
I think it goes to this one.
Make a motion to close the nominations.
Right.
But do you have a motion to here and close?
We need a motion.
Okay.
To close.
Okay.
And do we not need discussion as to what we're going? Do we have it after we close? That's my question. Does the discussion come before or after?
Well, I think we would need a motion to close nominations.
Okay.
Right.
And then discussion.
Then discuss.
Right.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to close.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Discuss?
I'll discuss. I think that allowing Mrs. Vance and Mrs. Krieger the opportunity this year of leadership roles sets them up and our district up for the next few years. As currently, Mr. Hart, Mr. Shrock, and myself are all up for reelection. And I think having experience of leadership for the future is a wise idea. And I would like to say, Mr. Shrock, I do appreciate all of the years of service that you have given.
As I alluded to in nominating Mr. Shrock, I think his longstanding service is worthy of recognition in this manner. And he's certainly been around the block once or twice, capable of doing the role. I don't know that the Vice President, I mean, it can be as large or small a role as the Vice President takes on, but really, any board member can have a similar, a similar role. There's no real authority. The President only has limited authority, so I don't know that it's that significant. But I do think it's, it's a nice thing for Mr. Shrock to have.
Any other discussion?
I was just gonna add, I'm happy either way, but I'm also willing to serve in that role if it helps maybe each of us in tandem get the swing of things or have a little more. But I realize if it's more helpful to have experience, it's, I'm happy either way to help however I can.
Well, I would be looking for anybody's experience.
Yep. I'm good. Okay, I'm good.
So. If there's no more discussion.
We haven't done it for 13 years, so I'm not sure.
My, my understanding of the procedure from here, and I'm looking at how the form is as well, reinforces it. At this point, right, we don't really vote on a motion other than what we, what we would do is we would, we would indicate the name of the person that we vote for, or we would abstain. Those are, those are the three, the other.
That's what I thought.
If you vote for Jeff Shrock, you vote for Kate Krieger, you could abstain. Those are the three options.
That's what I thought. Okay. I'm ready. Mrs. Bamerlin?
Mrs. Krieger?
Oh, I see.
Mrs. Krieger?
Abstain?
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Shrock?
Mr. Shrock?
Myself.
Mrs. Vance?
Mr. Shrock?
Set.
Okay, we've got, the vote is Mrs. Bamerlin for Mrs. Krieger. Mrs. Krieger abstained. Mr. Hart voted for Mr. Shrock. Mr. Shrock voted for Mr. Shrock. Mrs. Vance voted for Mr. Shrock. We have three for Mr. Shrock. One for Mrs. Krieger, and one abstention.
Are you ready? Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Jeff Shrock.
I, Jeff Shrock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As Vice President of the Board of Education.
As Vice President of the Board of Education.
And and for.
And.
In and for.
And in for.
The said Northridge Local School District.
The said Northridge Local School District.
Licking.
Licking.
Knox.
Knox.
And Delaware County.
And Delaware County.
Ohio.
Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws now in effect.
In accordance with the laws now in effect. In accordance with the laws now in effect.
And hereafter.
And hereafter.
To be enacted.
To be enacted.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
And until.
Until.
My successor.
My successor.
Is chosen and qualified.
Is chosen and qualified.
You're sworn in. If you would sign right here, please. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your chair, sir.
Your chair, sir.
Congratulations. And Kate? Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm still going to use all your call.
Move now.
We're up. Yeah.
We're up.
At least over.
At least over.
Get my coat after. Get this stuff out of my hands.
Oh, I got my coat over there, too.
Yep. I don't want any veggie dust. So I don't want any veggie dust.
Ah. All right.
That's why I came to my musical chairs.
Make it stretch mid, mid-meeting, Chris.
Yeah. All right.
What kind of?
I could get, I was gonna try to grab, it's on the floor.
It's on the floor?
Yeah. Oh. I couldn't reach it. It, between the, right there.
There we go. Thank you. I'm like sometimes, I knew I had, I knew I had one in.
Okay, we're on uh, continuing on. Number three, the board authorizations, uh, three point one. We're establishing the Board of Education meeting dates for twenty twenty five. And it is recommended that the Board of Education establish the following dates for the regular meetings for the Board of Education during twenty twenty five. And these are all, except for the Monday today.
They're all the third Tuesday.
Yeah. These are, should be all on the third Tuesday of every month. Oh, I see it here. Board of Education meetings are typically scheduled on the third Tuesday of each month. Meetings will be held at six thirty P M in the district office. Do I have any uh?
I would, I would move to approve the schedule.
Do we have to have money for that?
We should, well, or do we have these combined?
No, this is not.
No, this is outside of. Think, no, we're not combined until three point three.
So we just left off the, the voting block.
Okay.
I, I thought from having done this once or twice that, that we usually voted on these separately, so. That's why I moved that we approved the meeting schedule as laid out.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lewis, can we have the roll?
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Mrs. Krueger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mrs. Vance.
Yes. Onto three point two. Approved Board Meeting Curfew. Uh, this is, Board Meetings will be, will end at a curfew of ten P M. Unless otherwise voted on. I don't see. We don't need to vote for this. Is that under this? It's on a five five fourteen. Where this?
You can also change it to say three point two.
Thank you. Where's that?
Three point one four.
Got it down here.
Oh. Were they combined?
Yeah, it was supposed to be with that. Looks like it was supposed to be.
So we'll just on three point one five was made it safer for, for three point two to three point one. Three point one, three point two. Yeah, this was throughout. And then the rest of them was combined. I just keep a wonderful things off.
Okay. So do I have a uh motion on this? The curfew?
I'll make a motion.
Were you looking at that? No. Um, I'm reading the agenda that we're having consent agenda items as type of action. Is that, are we doing that? Well, so I'm just asking, are we gonna fol- follow through actions as consent, or do you want to do individual voting?
Oh, I see what you're talking about, Jana.
So um, three point two, and if you go to page nine of fourteen, um, it's organizational items. It says three point one, but we can make that three point two through three point one four. And we can vote on all of these items as one vote if you prefer. But again, it has to be, I think we need to have a board vote on if we're want to do that. Does, do we have a consensus on that idea? You know, I'm thinking of consent agenda and you have to approve it.
Yeah, we, we didn't. We, we don't have on here.
Right.
A section, a segment. We didn't have it last year either. I think it was October last year, too. Um. But I was, I think overseeing that and just went on the fly. Um, but yeah, I would, normally you would, in our regular meetings, we have the consent agenda where we, and of course, there really isn't much to introduce on these, but I suppose there is. You, you'd have the, the superintendent or the treasurer introduce their items like we do, and then, and then we, 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 there's a reason to change the agenda, and again, even if the agenda, I have something I want to change. Um, but nothing in this section, but um, but yeah.
Do you want to do that, Christine? Do you want to present? And then is that what, well, that's maybe why we don't have a roll call under these other ones.
That, yeah, that's it.
Is because they're supposed to be. Uh, yeah. I think the first one is two.
I hadn't gone deep enough into that. We'd love to have two separate consent sections, but it's what we have.
That was a consent as well. Um. We actually, it just, so. What are you thinking, Jana?
Do you want to move, if you're on page four, it would be right after three point one five. It says, um, right now what is stated is move by blank and seconded by blank to approve organizational items. I would say three point two through should be three point one five. Um, if everybody's comfortable with that now as a board, we could go back and just talk about it.
It'd be one four. Because fifteen is the approval tag. It's, it's.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, three point one four. So if everybody as a board is comfortable with that, we can now just go back to three point two and just kind of talk about each one of them.
Do you want to present starting at uh, three point two?
Sure.
Perfect.
Thank you. Is that okay? Superintendent goes through.
If everybody's okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's perfect.
Okay. So uh, three point two, approving the board meeting curfew. The recommendation is to establish the board meeting curfew at ten P M. So board meetings will always end at ten P M unless otherwise voted on. Three point three, annual authorizations. It's recommended to approve the following annual resolutions and authorizations. Number one, resolution authorizing the superintendent and treasurer to attend conventions, conferences, institutes and meetings that may prove beneficial to the superintendent or treasurer and the school district in twenty twenty five. Number two, resolution to nominate the board president as delegate and the vice president as alternate delegate to the O S B A Delegate Assembly for the annual business meeting, November twenty twenty five. Number three, resolution to waive the reading of minutes in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section three, three, one, three point two six in Board Policy zero, one, six, eight. Number four, resolution to establish board meetings compensation at a hundred and twenty five dollars per meeting attended for a total of thirteen meetings. Number five, resolution establishing a service fund in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for members of the Board of Education or their designated representatives to attend professional development meetings or conferences in performance of their duties as represent, as representatives of the school district. Ohio Revised Code, three, three, one, five, point one, five permits boards of education to appropriate two dollars per student or twenty thousand dollars, whichever is greater to establish a service fund. Three point four, approved business practices. The recommendation is to approve the current business tra- transactions. Number one, authorize the treasurer CFO to obtain tax advances to meet current operating expenses of the district. Number two, authorize the treasurer CFO to invest monies in accordance with board policy. Number three, authorize the treasurer CFO and board president to arrange the borrowing of monies needed to meet current operating expenses in anticipation of the collecting of revenues. Number four, assign signatures on general warrants to treasurer CFO. Number five, assign signatures on payroll and all other warrants to the treasurer. Number six, authorize the superintendent CEO to place employees on, on the salary schedule when deemed necessary. Number seven, authorize the superintendent CEO to hire staff between board meetings. Number eight, authorize the superintendent CEO to accept resignations. Number nine, authorize the treasurer CFO, director of business services to make changes to transportation slash bus routes as necessary and report to the Board of Education within thirty days after. Number ten, authorize the treasurer to pay all bills within the limits of appropriations as bills are received and after merchandise has been received. Number eleven, authorize the treasurer to advertise for bids as specified by law. Number twelve, authorize the superintendent or her designee to approve professional development for all employees of the school district. Number thirteen, authorize the superintendent and treasurer to dispose of and or discard or sell all textbooks, library books, manuals, support materials, equipment, et cetera at all schools due to age, condition and or beyond repair as necessary throughout the calendar year. Number fourteen, authorize the superintendent, director of curriculum, director of special education and treasurer to attend professional meetings and to be reimbursed for any expenses incurred as necessary for the performance of their duties. Number fifteen, authorize the treasurer to make appropriate transfers and advances within and between funds and accounts to maintain proper balances within educational budgets. Number sixteen, authorize the superintendent or his or her designee to be the hearing officer to, for discipline hearings. Three point five, approve the Board of Education designee for suspension and expulsion appeals. Recommended action is to approve the Board of Education designee for suspension and expulsion appeals. For purposes of administrative guideline five, six, one, zero, suspension and expulsion, the board identifies Janice Collette as its designee for suspension and expulsion appeals. And then, then there is a voting thing right there that should just not be on the agenda. Three point six, approve faithful performance bonds. Recommended action is to purchase faithful performance bonds for the board president and local superintendent in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Three point seven, approve faithful performance bonds for the treasurer. Recommendation to purchase faithful performance bonds for the treasurer in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Three point eight, approve appointment of designee. Recommended action is to approve the appointment of the school district treasurer as the school board members designee to obtain three hours of certified public records training per each official's term in office in accordance with House Bill nine mandated public records and open meetings law training. Three point nine, approve district purchasing agent. Recommendation to appoint the local superintendent as district purchasing agent. Three point one zero, approve state and federal grants representative. Recommended action to appoint the local superintendent as authorized representative for all state and federal grants and direct her to make application for such funds. Three point eleven, approved cer- certified substitute personnel. Recommended action to authorize local superintendent to employ substitute personnel as needed from the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio Approval List and or the Licking County Educational Service Center. Three point one two, approve legal counsel. The recommendation to approve legal counsel. Ricker and Grayden, Dinsmore and Stoll, Scott Scriven, Pepple and Wagner. Three point one three, approve twenty twenty five membership with O S B A and O S B A Legal Assistance Fund. Recommended action to approve membership with the Ohio School Board Association, O S B A and O S B A Legal Assistance Fund for the calendar year twenty twenty five. Member fees are six thousand two hundred and fifty seven dollars, and the legal assistance fund is two hundred and fifty dollars. Three point one four, approve twenty twenty five mileage rate. Recommended action is to follow the twenty twenty five standard I R S mileage rate as set by the federal government annually using the cents per mile rule to reimburse employees, school, business, travel expenses. And that rate is been set most recently at seventy cents a mile. And that brings us to three point one five, approval of board authorization items.
I think you would ask for discussion.
Should we ask for the discussion first or the motion?
Excuse me?
Do we ask if there's, for discussion? Because I know you've got some things you.
Well, when we have our form, we would offer people an opportunity to pull items from the consent agenda if they so desire.
Okay.
Before we, before we sought a motion.
Okay. Okay. So is there any thing that you'd like to?
I do have, I do have uh, several things. I'd like to pull items six and seven from two, I'm pointing the number three point four. And three point one two, the legal counsel item, and I would like to have each legal firm considered separately.
What was that last number? The legal one?
Three point one two. I don't know how I confused, confused myself earlier thinking that that was section four. It was the three and Jana was all over it all along.
So you're asking to pull three point four and three, one, three point one two?
Three point one two. And items six and seven out of three point four. There's a list of sixteen items in.
I think we should pull the whole pool.
Well. Well. The reason I want to just pull those two things, I mean, you're welcome to pull the rest if you want. But the reason I want to pull just those two items are I, I think we should be a little more intentional about considering those two items. The rest of it, I have no issues with at all. They, those to me are typical consent items that there shouldn't be any, as far as I can see. Other people might think there shouldn't be any, anything on six and seven, but that, that's what pulling items out of a consent agenda is all about. It's, it doesn't matter. As long as one person wants them considered separately, they can be, that, that they should be considered that way. So that's why I'm just, that's why it's just six and seven.
I didn't understand why you said six and seven. So now I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, out of three point four.
Did you get that? The three point four, okay. So we're gonna move these out of three point four.
Item six and seven.
Six and seven. And then we're going to, out of three point one two, we're gonna pull those and separate those out.
Block them separately, right.
Right. So those move to where do they move to? Here, the separate consideration items?
That's, that would be a fine place for them.
Okay, good. We don't need anything for that.
You could also consider them after three if you wanted to because they're, they're that nature, but whatever, whatever you want to do.
Oh.
You can make a call.
Let me see what's after three. Directly after the consent.
Normally our separate consideration items would follow directly after the consent agenda.
So we've got committee.
Committee assignments in her in between those. By normally, I mean at a regular meeting.
Where would you, where would you prefer?
I think that's why you do it right after.
Right after, okay, it makes sense to do it that way, right after, okay, so we're moving them here.
Okay, I'll take a stab at this, I'd like to make a motion to approve the organizational items. Three point two. To three point one, four excluding. Three point four, item six and seven, and excluding three point one, two.
I'll second that, attacker.
Do we need discussion for this, no?
I think it's all plain, everything that's left is plain and out of me.
Did you, Jam, did you have something?
No, but I do, I just think we should make note that we need to add seventy cents a mile to the three point one, four.
I think it's on.
It's there, it's just on the side.
Oh, I never saw it.
So I wouldn't miss it too, but.
Sorry, my bad.
It's okay, I had to look twice too. It's, it's there.
It's, to me, I didn't care, I know it's on whatever rep, rep proc was issued like number three or four of the year, so just whatever number they have.
That's so everybody knows, that's what it is right now. Till it changes. Does anybody else have anything they want removed from the consent? There ain't nothing else. Mister Lewis?
Excuse me, Mrs. Bamberlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mister Hart.
Yes.
Mister Schrock.
Yes.
Mrs. Vance.
Yes.
So looking at the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. I think that's where we're at, three point four, we removed six. Authorize the superintendent, uh CEO to place employees on the salary schedule when deemed necessary. Got the discussion first.
Well, if you if you want to add a motion to approve it first, you can.
Okay, that's the way we typically do the motion first and then discussion before the roll.
Yeah, yeah, discussion after we have a motion. If there's a need to introduce it, that'd be fine, but Dr. Michael already introduced it.
She did.
So this is for just six or are we doing six and seven?
I think.
To me.
Are we doing it together?
To me, six and seven can be handled from, for my my concerns are are equal.
Okay.
But if if anybody else wants them separated further, that's fine.
Any other thoughts on that, separate or together?
Okay, let's do them together then. Do I have a, a motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve three point four, six and seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll start now.
Discussion?
Sure. Unless, unless movement, you want to address it first, but I imagine you'd like to hear what my issues are. Well, not all my issues, but just ones related to this. My, my issues are far too many, I don't want to go into tonight. Now, just some of this fell out of our, our. Goals and our reviews. My, my, I I've been queasy about this ever since the first time I I saw it in in twenty thirteen. Um but as I noted one time this summer, I think it was related to. The discussion we had about the ESC hiring, but this was back in May or June originally. Uh I referenced how we had an understanding with superintendents over the years. That I don't think we'd ever shared with Dr. Michael about how even though this authority exists. That it was understood that the authority would be used sparingly, if at all. And 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 always with letting the board in on everything related to any proposed hiring. Including any movement on a salary chart before before it happened. And understanding that especially, I think we talked about it in July. Um when, you know, we get into resignation season. Yeah, I mean, it's, you you gotta move fast and we understand that and but but still. We want, I I think we want the board to understand what's going on. Whether we need to have formal limits or not, I'm I'm prepared to work. Um with you, Mrs. Vance and and anybody else to come up with something, I don't know, I don't think we want to take that on tonight. But what I what I'd see tonight is just a commitment from our administrators. That, I mean, and and the recent, the recent science teacher is an example, unless I missed it. I mean, I'm glad we were able to find one, I'm glad, and 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 by all means, jump on it. Um and I doubt that anybody wanted to have a special meeting over the holidays. Um but I I don't know what step the person's on, I don't know the term of the contract or any of that stuff yet, and. And that's information that that I'd like to have when, as it happens, and that's just, you know.
So you'd like me to change my practice and when I do my board update, include that information in my board update?
Yeah, and 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 like, it it'd be great to know that that we have a candidate. Um and something like that, because I mean, everybody, nobody was happy. That we all of a sudden were out of science teacher again, and we were all concerned about the kids and.
Right.
So knowing as soon as we can, we're making progress, because I I didn't think we'd find a science teacher until June. Uh July, whenever, you know, and and so it's great that we were able to find one.
I thought that was in my board update this past week.
It was.
Okay.
But I think your board update came after he started school.
No, no, we just, well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because we, because we were off for winter break, okay.
Yeah, so. But but. But just a commitment that 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 kind of information be shared as early as possible and and. I, I, I think as we work on goals or things like that. Or whether we get there or not, we 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 need to have the communication piece. And the involvement of the treasurer and all that, and I don't know whether that happened or not, and I don't, I don't want to belabor tonight to even find out. But uh but but that's, I think that that's the extra stuff that we need to get into, but I we we could be here until midnight and still win game and done. So with that commitment, I can, I can. I can support the motion.
Yeah, I do agree, this last one. It was a little bit of a, something was disconnected in the last one, and I think it was timing. But, yes, I agree, we need to, we need to have something there, so. If that's something you can commit to and.
And I think it'd be rare that a board member's gonna have an issue. But we still want to know. I don't want, I don't want to tell you who to hire or when to hire or any of that. But I want to, I know, I want to know that you're thinking about it and that you're doing it, and that's all. I think that's what everybody wants.
Yeah, and I would just add, I mean. I wouldn't have thought twice about these two items, I mean, I think, I feel that you've been transparent, we knew you were actively. Looking for someone, so. I have no hesitations. Approving these items.
Is there any more discussion on this? Pretty good. Okay. Mister Lewis?
Miss, excuse me, Mrs. Bamberlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mister Hart?
Yes.
Mister Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes.
Moving on to the separate consideration item that was pulled, it was three point one, two. The um. The attorney, legal counsel, the four um. They wanted to take them separately.
Yes, please.
Do you have a motion for that?
Our motion.
We're doing them one at a time.
That's what I was.
I should say that, yeah, let's do them one at a time, starting from the top. Bricker and Grayden LLP, uh we'll do that one first, do I have a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
On Bricker Grayden, what what I'd like to know, Brett, or Mister Lewis, you know where I am. Um, what what are they, what, do you know what they're doing, can you tell us what what they're doing for us, or or both of you to the extent? They're doing things for both of you?
Yeah, they're both, uh they're mostly doing um work with our um, anything that has to do with buildings, grounds, um property. I do know that they have, and you'll, and you'll have to answer this, they have done work for us with special ed. I don't know that they still are.
Not at this point.
Right, so I think it's mostly just uh having to do with buildings, contracts with that, um projects. Uh they've been working. And um, yeah, yes, and transportation. You've also been using Scriven for some transportation issues too, but. On, we've been using uh Bricker for transportation, especially uh. Yeah, yeah, payment lieu and and the uh, any bus route timings and things like that that we'd be doing.
So, so in thinking about these law firms, I I wondered whether it would make sense for us to put. And again, as with the legal fees, I I I'd love for there to be some some limitations. One of the limitations last year that came to a head was. I desperately want the board president to refrain from engaging legal counsel, I I think with Mrs. Vance as our new president. She can probably satisfy me by by saying that that. Absent some dire emergency where there's something involving one of our administrators that she has absolutely no clue how to deal with. She'll come to the board before she runs to legal counsel.
Yes, I would uh get bored. Get the consensus from the board first. I can't think of anything right now, not that I'm, I'm new at this, can't think of anything right now that would uh justify. Um going to legal counsel at this point. In a emergency situation that where I couldn't talk to the other members on the board.
The only thing I can think of is where you had an issue regarding privacy, a concern about a privacy issue. And it was delicate and you weren't sure how you might want to, how how to approach it, and you wouldn't, and you, there wasn't really anybody you felt. Comfortable talking to, well, you can at least get that, you can get the attorney client privilege and talk to the lawyer, knowing that it's not going anywhere else.
But wouldn't that be like an executive session thing anyways, because it's.
But the problem with, the problem with executive session is once you talk about things, they're known. And there could be a situation where you're you're hesitant to even share the nature of the matter. Because once the cat's out of the bag, it's out of the bag.
I guess I won't know until it arises, but that is not my intent.
You you wouldn't, but I'm just, I'm I'm just saying in that situation, you'd need to be able to seek counsel if you thought you needed it. But then it's just gonna be, what the hell do I do here? And 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 it'll take fifteen minutes and. Probably tell you to talk to Jeff, but yeah.
Talk to, talk to Jeff?
First. But anyway.
So.
But so, so with Bricker, the the question that I have then for 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 all of us is is. With them only doing the real estate projects and transportation, we could, we could limit. Them to real estate and transportation, and my concern this year with legal expenses is so much greater than it ever was in the past. Because Jam has reported back that she's talked to OSBA, I think, and maybe the lawyer, one or two lawyers. That is that, that simply putting these law firms on our. In our minutes is having been approved. Basically, you, they're, they don't need a fee agreement. They, there's no restriction on on what they can be engaged for, and so the board is just all of a sudden giving up all control over legal expenses at that point. And and that really concerns me, my, am I overstating it? And so, I mean, ultimately, I'd love to see this move to a situation where absent expenditures over a certain amount, we. Um, or under a certain amount, you know, we we request, we request from the lawyers a fee agreement, why they don't give us fee agreements, I don't know. Um, back when I was practicing, I mean, the insurance carriers would not cover you. If you didn't have fee agreements with your clients, I mean, or 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 the rate would go through the roof. Um, and and I I just, it 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 just baffles me. But um, that's not something I don't think we're prepared to work through tonight, it's something, again, that I'm I'm happy to work on and. Report back at a later day. But I mean, we we could put a limitation like that in since we're not using for anything else, and I don't think have any intention for using or something else. But.
I would not feel comfortable tonight limiting specific. Law firms to only certain things, but that's my feeling. Especially a lot of things that were said tonight are, make me uncomfortable, like saying that we're gonna get a consensus from the board. Outside of a board meeting.
I didn't say outside of a.
That's what you suggested before she reaches out, but then we're gonna vote on getting legal counsel on a specific item in front of. That's what doesn't make sense to me, like, there are certain things that. We're trusting the president to take to legal counsel, and that has happened with every president, not just the one this in twenty twenty-four. So.
I never.
I I just don't feel comfortable with. I, I don't feel comfortable putting specific limitations tonight.
I know that isn't a, that is wrong.
Right, that's not true, but.
Because I was on a phone call with you with attorneys by ourselves, so that is definitely not true, so. Understand that, Mister Hart.
I I think you're wrong.
No, I'm not, I can't say what the phone call was, but I can privately. Make you remember.
Okay.
And I mean, I personally have been in meetings where I was blindsided by the fact that attorneys were involved way before I was made aware of situations, so. I understand. I understand where you're coming from, like, but to limit it to say that it only happened this past year is not fair.
Yeah, I even remember with other board presidents, I have quite a few where it's very. Critical situations that phone calls have had to been made, and again, at that time. It has to be decided what law firm would be best, and as we talked to last year. Each law firm does have their specialty, but there could be a conflict of interest or something that you might have to pivot and ask for another one. I don't know, again, back to, it's a situation that we would never want to be in, but you would not want to. Take, have our treasurer, our superintendent, our board president penalized because we made a decision tonight. Saying that they can't talk to somebody. I think that would be wrong.
Well, let me just clear up one thing before we continue, when I say consensus, I'm talking about in an open meeting. If it's something that I can do, I'm not talking about talking to somebody on the side. I'm talking about in this setting, so everybody can see what we're talking about, unless it's something. That obviously we have to go into executive session or something for, but when I said that, in no way did I mean that, hey, I'm gonna call up Kate. And I'm gonna have a conversation. when I said that, in no way did I mean that, hey, I'm gonna call up Kate and I'm gonna have a conversation about that or whatever. That's just where I'm thinking now. I haven't broached any of this stuff, but I do think, I mean, and you're not expecting anything tonight, I don't think. You wanna bring this up and get some type of, uh,
In, in, in terms of, yeah, other than the possibility of, like, the next one, Dinsmore and Shoal, the only thing we use them for are bonds. And, and it would be reasonable to limit them. I mean, I don't think anybody has any intention calling Dinsmore and Shoal to do anything else. It would just show the public that we're engaging in due diligence, um, and protecting the district against that happenstance. But.
Yeah, and I'm trying to do that in the future, but not really tonight. I'd prefer to see if we're gonna give somebody who that's their specialty, I would just like to know that before voting on that. So I'm fine, just not tonight.
Yeah, we hired Dinsmore when we were working on the elementary building because we had, we had to issue the bonds. And so their, their only ongoing involvement with us is whatever work has to be done annually or periodically.
Annually.
Related to the bonds.
Right. I just, I want my chance to research that myself, is what I'm saying, like what everybody specializes in, so. Cause who knows? Maybe, maybe we would see something that we'd prefer a law firm to do something else for us than what they're doing right now.
And.
If we're reviewing that.
But we can always approve that. In other words, if our, if our administrators want to use a law firm for something else, usually you're gonna, it, it's, it's not a, you know, it's coming. And, and and we have enough special meetings usually that, that, that can always be put on the special meeting agenda, or if it's critical, two days, you call special meeting. I mean, I, I mean, it's not gonna be happening all that often. But, um, so I mean, that, it, we're not tying their hands, we're not punishing them in any way. Uh, we're merely being what I consider fiscally, um, cautious and, and, and responsible. But if, if we, if we were to, if we were to do some things to fight back against this cart lunch that apparently exists. So, but, but I'm happy to move forward tonight. It doesn't sound like there's gonna be an appetite tonight to, uh, uh, do more than, 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 than vote on these separately, so, uh.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm hearing that we just need more information.
Yeah.
And, you know, obviously, we can't set limits unless we know, you know, um, some information from both you and the treasurer to see where they're at. Um, what's normal, what's normal stuff, but it's out there.
In my mind, anything the lawyer is asked to work on is per se, a little bit unusual. And so that's, that, that's an item that really ought to be communicated to the board somehow. Um, if it's something we don't wanna create a public record for, you know, because of privacy concerns, very legitimate. Um, just save it for executive session, have an executive session, talk about the, whatever those things are, and, um, I think, I think that would help. And that, that would be one of the things that I'd wanna address. But, um, again, that, not tonight, that. Just to get everybody thinking about it.
Yes. And we're still on.
I, I've, I've got no further comment.
On the Bricker and Grayden?
Yeah.
Okay. You kind of addressed the Dinsmore and Shoal a little bit too, but we're doing them one at a time.
We, we have a motion for Bricker, I think.
Right, we do. Okay. Is there any more discussion on Bricker and Grayden?
Why did they change their name? Oh, never mind. I know they merged.
Oh. Mr. Lewis, can you take the role?
Yes, um, Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes. Okay, moving on to, uh, the Dinsmore and Shoal LLP.
I'll move that we approved Dinsmore.
Do I have a second?
One second.
We have a person, any discussion?
My, my, my main reason for making all of these separate was I, I, I think it's important that we stop now and then and, and, and look at what our lawyers do for us generally. And we already said that Dinsmore's sole legal function is bonds and at some future date, we can consider whether we wanna impose some kind of limitation and win this motion to amend this resolution to reflect that down the road.
No further discussion on that?
Before we take the roll, um, are you, can you check to see that the sound's working on yours? I've received a text from outside that says the sound's not working. Perfect, thank you. Okay.
You ready?
Yes.
The roll?
Uh, Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes. Moving on to Scott Shriver? Did I say that? Hello, P?
Scriven.
Shriver?
Scriven.
I will enthusiastically move that we approve that.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
So, can we have a summary of what we use, um, Scott Shriver for? I know many of the things, I don't.
Um, negotiations, special education, um, helped with public records, um, some personnel issues, some more generic ones.
Use it for, um, any student. Things like that.
Oh, if we have like, uh, expulsion hearings or, um, um, staff complaints.
Well, I just wanna say unqualifiedly that Julie Martin is just such an impressive, an impressive attorney. Um, I, 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 I can't say enough good things about her, and I've observed her in a number of different legal matters over the years and, uh, um, wholeheartedly, um, have no complaints about any work that we were to send their way. And I think that her, I don't know if he's an associate or a partner, but the, the, the lawyer that's been assisting with the public records, um, did just a marvelous job in organizing and ensuring that, that the responses to those were, were consistent with public records law. And that, 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 the task would have been um, way too much for its office without that kind of help. And he just, he did a super job.
I agree.
Any more discussion? Can you do the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Berman?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes. Now we're down to the Pebble and Wagner LTD. Um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jeff? Discussion?
Again, I'd ask for, for a summary of anything they're, they're working on for us now.
So, my understanding from, um, when I became superintendent is that Pebble and Wagner have historically done like administrative contracts and contract work for us.
I, I, I don't think they had.
That's who the board had Mr. Wiggins do my contract with.
Oh, well, that, that, that one contract, I think, yeah, I, I think Mr. Wiggins had an ongoing relationship with, with the firm from one matter, uh, previously. But, uh, um, that, that, that was, so, so I think your contract was probably the second thing that they did for us. Not sure I really was aware that they did it, but, but.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't contact.
I know, I know you didn't. You had your own line. But, um, appropriately, uh, everybody should. Okay, so, but so they're doing mostly contract stuff for us. And, and then I know some of the other things they did during the year. Um, I, I was just completely unimpressed with the work that I saw, some of the work I saw. And, uh, um, other than wrapping up whatever they're continuing, whatever they're currently working on for us, if anything, uh, I would not use them again. Um, I could go into more detail, but I'll, I'll spare you. I think everybody that was in the executive session is fully aware of what I'm upset about.
And I actually have the opposite experience. I guess I feel like they are the law firm that in my experience on the board, we had an attorney there working on multiple things. So, and mainly because people on the board weren't a fan of certain attorneys that were already mentioned before. So in my experience, this is normal procedure for us to have Pebble and Wagner.
Well, I can tell you from experience, Pebble Wagner was used only as a tiebreaker between Bricker and Scriven in the past and had not worked on contracts until this year, except for apparently that contract. We'd use Bricker and Eckler, and we'd use Scriven. And we were leaning more towards Scriven on all personnel matters, which would include contracts. So, um, this is the first year we've used Pebble at any kind of level.
No, we, we did use them in previous years.
At a large level.
They were put on the agenda, or on our list originally, um, after I had attended a seminar that they put on, and I was thoroughly impressed with the presentations across the board. And I don't know if anybody else is getting the invites or not. I'm getting them. I, despite not particularly caring for certain legal work that they perform for us, they, they put on marvelous seminars and, and, and thoroughly informative and they, they, they do an excellent job with them. And go if you, uh, if you have a chance. But, um, but that was, that was how they got on. And for years, two or three, we didn't use them at all. Then one matter came up, um, and we, and, and, uh, we consulted with them and another matter came up and, and I, I presume a bill came out of the second one. I don't know. Um, but I mean, I presume one did. Uh, and that was probably the basis for what had a little bit of a budget that, and then Dr. Michael's contract, that's probably created the small budget compared to the bill. It wasn't a small number, but compared to the total of the bills, it was a small number. And, um, this last year was the first year they were used extensively. And, and sorry, that contract interpretation where you mistake an and or a statute says or, and two lawyers didn't realize it and thought it's a and, and it's critical. Um, that's just not something I can forgive. And, I mean, most lawyers that I know, somebody was working on a job for them and made that error, that's the last thing they'd ever do for that lawyer.
I'm comfortable with trusting, I'm not, I I have disagreed with some things we have been told before from, I mean, I couldn't even tell you which law firm it was, but on some matters, we have to trust the experts and they specialize in school law. And so I'm comfortable with what the product they've given us so far.
Now, is this, um, the Shriver? Is that it? Shriver?
This is Pebble Wagner.
The, do they do the same type of law as the Pebble and Wagner?
Actually, everybody on here does the same type of law. Um, we use Dinsmore for the bonds, but they do, uh, other stuff too. Um, we've used Bricker for years. Oh, exclusively when I first got here, basically, except for, except for Dinsmore with the, with the bonds. Um, when Scott came in, we started using, uh, Scott Scriven. He asked that to be added, and it was, and we started using them. And they started doing our negotiations, did an outstanding job with negotiations, and then started doing more work with personnel issues, student issues, um, and then there was a time, uh, when there was a, a, where there was information that, um, past superintendent received and I had received that we're in a bit of conflict between Pebble and, or between Scott Scriven and, and, uh, Bricker. And we decided we would, we, as the board, we decided we'd try Pebble as the tiebreaker. And that's what we used them for one time, as a tiebreaker on. And they came back, to be honest with you, there was three different, all three had different recommendations. Um, and, and, um, so the, the, the tiebreaker wasn't, we thought one would land closer and it didn't. Uh, then I believe Pebble was used for an, an item that was, uh, and then obviously I didn't know that they did your contract. And then this last year, they were used quite a bit. And, um, so we have not had a past, a real past relationship with them uh, as much as we have with Scriven and, uh, Bricker.
Thank you. Anything else on that? No? Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Berman?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes.
Okay. We're now down to, uh, number four committee assignments, I believe. So, the appointment of board representatives if needed. Looks like, um, Jamie, you, uh,
this is kind of procedural. I think that, uh, Jamie had pointed out earlier in the day that last year, um, we had selected Evelyn as the alternate to legislative liaison, um, and Mr. Schrock is the alternate for the, uh, finance committee liaison, but I didn't get that onto the agenda. And then the other, um, committee assignments are, um, what we had last year, but in actuality, the policy committee, I've been told, is not a superintendent treasurer committee. It was a board committee. So it needs to be moved up above.
I didn't think so.
We had, we, I was told that we needed, and that's what we've, we've done this year, is we've noticed those meetings and had minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
So, the policy should go up under, with legislative and finance.
Wait a minute, what are you saying? Say it again.
So, the policy committee has to have an agenda and minutes and be noticed to the public, just like finance. And it's not a, a superintendent treasurer committee.
It's not a board committee. Finance is not a board committee.
Then maybe finance is in the wrong spot.
Yeah. Finance is not, not a board committee. It's technically a treasurer's committee.
No, it's not. It's, it's a community, it's a community committee.
It's a community committee. True.
And why, as, why would legislative be a board?
It's not a committee at all.
Yeah.
I don't, I just did it like it had been done in the past. I'm happy to.
No, I think, I think happenstance is what got it with no.
I do too.
Well, we never used to have policy as a, as, I wasn't even aware it was board committee. Um, probably, that, 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 that suggests that it probably should be treated the way we used to treat the, uh, athletic committee that we had. And, I mean, rather than just put it part of these very various reports, we know, we call them committee assignments, which are not, only a couple of them are really committees, maybe three. But they're not, they're, none of them are board committees, other than this one. A board committee is a wholly different animal.
Yes.
So, none of the board committees.
Um, I, I think policy could be. Um, because it comes out of, it's for this board, it's for the whole district. Um, so, and it's, um, the definition that we heard from Ohio School Boards Association today is a board committee is set up when the school board has an, a goal or an objective for that committee to go.
An, a goal or an objective for that committee to go off and handle. And then come back and report, so you have to have minutes, you have to have an agenda. You have to. It's open to the public and, um, has to be announced, so. Policy, because it's scheduled meetings with Neola, that's. Typically. Ohio revised code action items that we have to take action on, um. I think does fall in that category of being a board committee. Um, and we have now been in the past year. Um, reporting all of those things and posting it on our website, the minutes. Um. I believe the other committees. Are not. I don't, they're. Set up. As just. School committees. Um, reporting to either the treasurer or the superintendent and board members are invited to come and participate. But we. Um. What we were told though, um. Today, as well as I heard at Ohio School Boards Association and I heard. Uh, learned this or confirmed, got confirmation in the sunshine laws, public meeting training. Is that? All of these meetings or committees need to have minutes and those minutes should be posted. Um, it doesn't have to be detailed like a school board meeting, but you need to have an agenda and communicate back. What was done, I think what we did last year was very, we did it verbally. Um, but I think all of these committees need to present. Um, back so that they can, it can be public and the community can under see what these committees are doing. But I did just learn that.
In the case of legislative. Um, Ellen and I were the two assigned to it, but we were by no means a committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um. No sentiments at all, um. All we did was. My understanding of our role was that we were going to look a little closer. At facts. Facts and flash. Um, and, 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 and I have without fail looked at it. Uh, where, you know, when we set this up, Mr. Wiggins had indicated that that was something that he would, uh. That gave him headaches and he'd rather not look at it and, uh, and so that was kind of how that came about. And so, and we maintain, so. Just. So, so that, that, that's an example of a, of a, of a non-committee and of course our, uh. Um. What is it, uh? Watching over the develop, the development, community development.
Yeah.
Um, there, uh, uh. The next time it meets will be the second time it's met. And the first time it's met since COVID. Um, so, yeah, it's. So far, just kind of a, if you see something, it's kind of the see something, say something then. So.
Well, I think you could see, say the same thing for the wellness and insurance committee, even though I think.
Yeah.
We all would like to have a wellness committee. And have more. Have more communication or insurance, um, our past practice has not. Led to that.
So is wellness though, sorry. I haven't looked recently, but. Wellness, my understanding is we do have a policy that we do have to have, but not board members necessarily need to be on it.
I, I do believe.
The school has.
Yeah, I do believe it does not require a board member participation, but they could.
Okay.
Up to.
So that one, though, is an actual committee, just not board.
Policy that's specifically about wellness committee.
Okay.
I don't think it includes.
We combined it with insurance, right?
We combine it with insurance.
And, and I've considered my role on facilities. To be consistent with this, the role that. I understand we have on, on finance committee and I got that understanding before I was a board member. And that is, we're, we're pure liaisons. That we're not members of the, certainly not members of the finance committee, by, by their bylaws, we can't be members. And, you know, we're. We're, we're more or less invited guests. They have a spot on their agenda for the board to, for the board representative to tell. What happened, the highlights of, of things at the board meeting that affected them. And, and then at the end, there's a spot where everybody gets their two minutes to, to speak and. I've had complaints over the years from people on finance and, and other committees, the board members are. You know, taking up too much time. Uh, and, and they've been darn mad about it, um, that they prolong the meetings and. Uh, with this, I mean, our role is a liaison role, we need to be darn careful that we're not overstepping and, and, and because these people are volunteering their time. And. They want to hear us, they can, they come here and now they can watch the, they can watch the show. But, uh, I'll shut up.
So what are we wanting here? Are we wanting these to change? How we designate them? Is that what you're? Looking at, Jema? Um, you want them to be designated a certain way? This is something that we should look into and get back to, something we're. Able to do tonight?
Yeah, I think it's.
I mean. I'm just asking.
Yeah, um, I feel that. Really, we can. These are just appointments as being liaisons. My, my opinion is this board, since I've been on, has only really had one board committee and that was the stadium and that was. Selected by the board. Appointed individuals and you have to run it just like a board meeting. It's, and we don't have any of these.
Yeah.
Run like that, so. I think we're, we're talking as, okay, we need to make sure that everybody understands these are not board. Committees. Um, unless we agree that policy should be. And I think that.
I don't think we ever formally established it as a, as a board, I mean, I remember the night we established the, the athletic.
Yes.
Committee, I mean.
And then you have to report on it.
Voted on establishing the committee and then I appointed the members.
Right, you have to do, I mean, there's a lot of policy around that.
For policy.
No.
And we're not going to do it.
So what, what I do think though is that we should. Assign who wants to be the lead. The representative for each one of these. I think there should be a lead and then whoever has policy should work with. The board president, the superintendent on what that's going to be and then that can be addressed at a regular meeting. If it's a board policy, if it's a board committee, you see what I'm saying? Cause you're going to have to set it up appropriately.
Okay. Alrighty, so let's, um. Let's move on to, um. Assigning. Um. You know, liaison positions.
And if I may.
These. Yes.
Dr. Michael.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So much easier to read than.
Thank you. So we've got a. Legislative liaison, it was Mr. Hart and myself. This past year. Is there anybody? That wants to move into that, are you okay with keeping it?
Come on, don't everybody salivate and say they really want it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the, it may be a little dry, but.
Oh, uh, that, that, Mrs. Vance, I think we can keep the prize.
Okay. Then we will keep that the way it was, that will still be Mr. Hart and myself. Then. Finance committee. We had. Check this out. We had Mrs. Berman. And Mr. Shrock last year. Are we wanting, Jema, do? You want to stay on that one?
Um. Yes. Okay.
Jeff? Kate, you want to move into anything? What are you thinking? I know Wednesday, Wednesday was a rough one for you last year.
Myself, I'm happy to serve on it, just so I get a little bit of it, try everything. I think that is beneficial.
Do you want it this year then? It's going to be, what days is that going to be on?
Yeah, I know it's on Wednesdays, um, I mean, I don't, if Mr. Schrock.
You said he would stay on it. Do you want to stay on it, Jeff?
On which one?
The finance or do you want Kate to take it over so she can get some experience there? What would you like? I think she's leaving it in your.
She would like to take it and get some experience, that's fine.
You want it, Kate?
But, that's fine, yeah.
Mrs. Krieger is going to take that. So let me put. Kate there. Okay, now we have, uh, academic achievement. That was, uh, Mrs. Krieger and Mrs. Berman.
And I'm happy to stay on that or again, I'm willing, if anybody. Would like to experience that, then that's fine.
I can switch. To ones.
Did you want to, Jema, stay on this?
What did, um, I didn't hear.
I'll be okay with, I'm sorry. I'm okay with staying or moving if someone else would like to be on academic.
Okay. Um. I think I'd like to try it, cause I'm not on it and that'll give me a little bit there.
I think that's great. Evelyn, you can take my spot.
Okay. And then Kate, do you want to stay on it?
Yeah, I'm happy to still do that and I was going to add, cause that's. Is it quarterly or, okay, I couldn't remember how often.
It's not all the time. Usually Thursdays.
Right, okay.
But it's not every month.
No, it's not every month.
Then we're down to facilities, we had Mr. Hart and Mr. Shrock on that.
I'm, I'm happy to remain or again, if somebody wanted to. Take facilities over, I'm also. You know. I went out.
Just trying to mix it up if anybody wants to. Jeff, you okay with that one still?
Yep.
Okay.
Should we move Jeff to lead? Um, because he's not.
We, we can, it doesn't matter.
I'm just looking at, we don't have.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's not really so far, it's not something Mr. Schrock or I. Uh. Care about, one or both of us can go, we, one or both of us goes and.
Okay.
Generally, we just check into each other to see if either's got, if either of us can go.
You good with the way it is then?
But I, I don't care, I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy Mr. Schrock being lead, I wanted to. Shows changes.
Okay, looking. You want to be the lead on that, Jeff? Facilities? You're just switching.
Oh, just switch.
Yeah, you still be on it. Okay, we're going to change in. Uh, Mr. Shrock is going to take the lead on that one.
You'll be on the right side and I'll be, uh.
Yep.
On the left, yeah.
Okay. The community development. We haven't. Done anything this past year on that one.
Just a couple of reports on intel is all I've made.
Well, yeah, things we've got from the news and stuff.
Well, and there was a. A jet or something that Jersey was doing. I.
Well, we did go, I think you were there, um. To Alexandra, because they were talking about some changes, so we did do some stuff, even though the committee didn't actually meet.
Community was contributing to. The contribution on that because.
Right.
Liberty, Liberty Township meetings and that was very, that was very helpful and interesting.
So that's more of a just gathering information.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, again, it's not unlike the legislative thing, it's, it's, it's one where I just try to keep my, you know. Ears to the ground a little bit and I'm close to New Albany and I, I see a lot of what's coming our way there.
So we want to keep that the way it is?
Well, I don't want to steal my thunder from next meeting from.
Did you want to say something on that?
I was just going to say, I think it, yeah, I'm happy with it staying the way it is, I was. Curious if anyone ever just like, you know, in the moment could pass along the information and then we'd have like a come. Anybody from the board pass it on to you, Mrs. Vance, and then they, you'd have all of that in one. Play, maybe all of the updates throughout a month or something.
That's a good idea.
That often.
That's a very good idea, I like that one. Okay. We're going to leave. The. Uh, community development the way it is. Now we're down to, uh, policy. And that was Kate. Krieger. And Mr. Shrock. Um. Are you guys still good there?
Mm-hmm, I'm fine.
I, I know you want to stay there, I think.
I mean, I'm fine, yeah, either way.
You okay with that, Jeff? You still want to be there, okay. Great. Going to leave that the same. Which one is this policy? I like reading from here better. Okay. And then we've got the, uh. Wellness and insurance. And last year, yeah, that was Mrs. Berman and myself.
Nope, it was actually.
It was myself and Evelyn.
I'm happy to give it to.
Oh, I'll take it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, I'd like to be on it.
Do you want to be on it, Jema? So. Kate would be the, uh. First and Jema will be alternate.
I was thinking it was you.
Hmm?
Evelyn, you were.
You on it.
It was you on it.
Well, I was, but I thought Kate said she wanted.
Oh, no, I said I'm happy to give it to.
Yeah, and, and actually, yeah.
Not if you think that's too much, I'm happy to do it for you if you don't.
Never mind. I will, I will stay there, uh, unless you want to, uh. Switch with me on that.
Well, maybe someone else wants to switch with you, Evelyn, but. Um, I was. That's only my second. Item.
Okay.
Um. Let's see. I was just trying to share. Share the wealth.
Finance is a fairly heavy load. I mean, they, they do tend to meet.
They meet every month.
We'll just leave this one the way it is then, wellness and insurance, because you've got enough on your plate.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is that okay, Jema?
You and I.
Okay. Okay, all right, I think we're through that then. Um. I think we've announced, so we're down to number five. Separate items for consideration, we've already gone through the ones that we moved. Um. So it's five point one. Approve accepting amounts and rates. Recommendation to approve the following amounts and rates. Uh, resolution. Resolution to accept amounts and rates, uh, revised code fifty seven oh five point thirty four through thirty five.
Um, to. To. Would you like me to make a motion to approve? Uh, this item? Um, five point, I'm sorry, five point one. I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Um. Discussion on this, do we briefly want to go through this, just so? Um. People understand.
I'm asked this every year.
Mm-hmm.
My question is. Where are the amounts and rates?
That, that, this gives the, uh, taxing authority, uh, the right to set the rates.
Okay.
Um, at their meetings. And that we are agreeing with. Their findings.
Whatever they may be.
Whatever they may be.
Okay.
Great.
So you're basically giving the budget commission, the authorization to set the tax and rates. Um. With the county auditor.
I really have to do this if we want our tax money, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't want any tax money, we don't do it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Lewis, roll.
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Schrock.
Yes.
Mrs. Vance.
Yes. Uh, moving on to five point two, approve authorized request for advanced tax rates. Uh, recommended, recommendation to approve request for advance. Um. Mr., um, well. First, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can get ahead of myself. Uh, second. Anybody?
I'll second it.
Um, Mr. Lewis, yes, it's in discussion, if you would, just so everybody knows out there.
So. With the authorization to approve the tax advance rates, uh, this gets sent to the county auditor, this allows them to. As, uh, two times a year to send us our tax. Payments. Uh, ahead of, uh, as they're being collected basically. payments, uh, ahead of, uh, as they're being collected basically, in, in January, uh, and then, uh, in June. So, um, this gives the opportunity, there's been a little bit of a change where we have to bring this forward to you as it's happening, as we're going to request. So in January, you'll get another one of these, this is, this is just saying, yes, we're going to do it. And then you'll get the, the actual advance and then again in June, we'll bring another advance, uh, like we did last year. Which is new starting last year, used to be able to do a blanket and they would just send it. And they've changed their policy. So this is just saying that we're allowed to do it, to accept the advance. And, uh, the county auditor, um, knows that we're going to be requesting them.
Well, the treasurer pays the money, right?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe this came out of the state treasurer's office.
It could have, good point. I don't know.
Okay, any other discussions, questions? None? Mr. Lewis, roll.
Mrs. Bamberlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Vance?
Yes. Okay, moving on, uh, 6.1. Uh, reaffirm time and place of next Board of Education meeting. Uh, we've got, um, regular date Tuesday, January 21st, which is next week. Um, at 6:30 PM, location, district office. And then we've got, um, 6.2 reaffirm time and place of next committee meetings. Are these all current here?
Yeah.
Finance happened on the, uh, 8th, uh, but there was no quorum, they're trying to re, uh, affirm. Haven't gotten a confirmation of whether we're going Wednesday on the 15th. They were supposed to have confirmation by the end of today. And we haven't seen anything, so I don't know. I'm available and if they have a quorum, we'll have a meeting on the 15th. If we don't, then we will not have a meeting this month. Well, we had a, we went ahead and met, but it was a, there was no quorum to vote on anything.
Okay.
On the 8th.
So we've got the academic achievement, next meeting is January 30th, District Office, 6 PM. And the frequency on that is quarterly. Finance, we just talked about. Facilities, February the 26th is the next meeting. District Office, 6 PM and it, it's a monthly. Uh, the community development policy and wellness insurance, we don't have any scheduled meetings at this time.
Let's go back to the, um, facilities is bi-monthly.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Bi-monthly? Thank you. Is that the only change or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Onto 7.1, some of our favorite stuff. Adjourn the meeting, do I have, uh, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
And I'll second that.
And, uh, the meeting is adjourned at 8:07 PM. Oh, we got a vote, that's right.
Voice vote.
Oh, we can. Uh, can we have a voice vote on that?
Sure.
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All the ayes have it. I think we're good to go without, uh, dissent there. Thank you, everybody, we're adjourned at 8:07.